All right, we have six oh one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get started if that's all right with you guys.
Yeah.
Of course. All right, so I'm gonna call this meeting of the ordinance committee together November eleventh, six P M. We are meeting remotely due to COVID nineteen restrictions. And I just want to let people know that we have. We have some minutes to approve. Thank you, Owen. Tom, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at those. Yeah.
I actually did not see them come in, I'm sorry.
There's no problem. I mean, we'll just do them next time. I think that's a prudent approach. So if anybody is here to speak to a topic other than what is on our agenda. Now is the time. So if you want, you can just unmute and turn your camera on, just let us know your name and address before you speak. All right, I don't see any. So what we're gonna do tonight is we are going to, I'm hoping. Go through the final touches to the cannabis and highway business. So we can start moving on and talking about some of our other stuff. And basically, you know, what we had in front of us, we discussed last time. I wanna just kind of like revisit that. So I'm going to pull this up if you just bear with me here. And I'm gonna put this on the screen. Okay, so and I'll, let me see if I can zoom in on this a little bit. Okay, so what we have is we have the original language that we got from the planning board. Which I redid and everything I put in blue was stuff that we had talked about last time. Except for one thing which came up when we were in our public hearing. At the full council meeting and it was something I wanted to talk to the other, the other committee members about. So and I, because I feel like it was part of the spirit of what we've been talking about. Is kind of looking at one cannabis facility and not multiple cannabis facilities and and I just wanted to. Check in with my colleagues here to see if you, because that was just my impression. I, I guess I just wasn't thinking of. You know, many, many of these twenty five thousand square foot facilities. I was thinking if there was gonna be one, it would be one that was in conjunction with a retail store. And the way that it was worded, I think, kind of opened the door for multiple twenty five thousand square foot facilities. So I just wanted to. Throw that out there, maybe we can start there and. So I'll throw that over to you guys. Is that, were you with me or were, were you fully aware that? We were open, potentially opening the door for multiple.
I mean, I, once. I feel like that was not something that I had, had considered, but once I looked back at the language, it became clear that, yes, that's something that could potentially happen. And I'm not sure how I feel about that because. You know, to the extent that. That we're trying to sort of limit, you know, what we, what we, I think Jeff had put it in the first place of, you know. Using the example of these, these enormous, like this totally enormous cultivation. Facilities, I'm, you know, if that's something that we've decided that we don't necessarily want to see, I don't know if I, I understand the distinction between. One enormous cultivation facility and. A bunch of medium sized cultivation facilities in terms of whatever externalities people are concerned about. So that's just something like, if that's something that we're going to allow, I'd be, I'd want to hear sort of the rationale for why that's any better.
Right, okay, cool. How about you, Owen?
Sorry, switching between notes and Zoom.
No worries.
Well, that was my inference all along was we were basically talking about a cap on cultivation, whether it be. Two buildings that were twelve thousand five hundred square feet or one building that I just assumed that it was a cultivation cap and so. It never occurred to me that the language could have meant, you know, you can build, you can build a building up to twenty five thousand square feet, but you could build multiple. Buildings of that sort in the same parcel. So I always just presumed it was a cap and if we need to put language in. To stipulate that, that was my understanding all along. I agree with Counselor Peak that the spirit of, of this, of this discussion was to. Reduce potentially unusable. Buildings if they were to become vacant and so a giant complex of multiple large buildings is just as bad, sorry. Just as, I think, just as, I won't use the word bad, but it, it creates the same exact issue as one giant building, I. If I'm understanding like my colleague. So yeah, that would, I would be, I would be interested in capping that and just like we would. Potentially cap the overall size of a single retail space as we've discussed previously, you know, with big, big box retail. So that's, that's my input.
Okay, and that's, and that's what I, that's what I assumed and so I, I put in. You know, G, which would basically limit one cultivation manufacturing facility, which is capped at twenty five thousand square foot per parcel. Yeah, Tom.
I don't have a problem with that, but I guess another way we could do it would be to say. In D, to revise it to say like, the total. Cultivation and manufacturing footprint shall be, shall, shall not be larger than.
Shall not exceed.
Yeah, shall not exceed. Because if there's some reason why, for whatever reason, somebody would rather build two ten thousand square foot buildings. I have no issue with that. Like, I don't, I don't feel that there's a need to, for them to be in one. Building. I, I just that if what we're worried about here, and again, I'm, I'm mostly, a lot of this is stuff that I, like, I'm, I'm mostly just sort of being, trying to be responsive to. That we've heard. There is a concern about huge footprints. Like, then I think the cap should be on the, like, the total footprint for this sort of use. And however many buildings they want to arrange that, I'm not sure that, I could change my mind on this, but I'm, I'm just not sure that that's a priority for me right now.
So it'd be like a cultivation manufacturing building shall. Have no, shall have no larger footprint. Than twenty five thousand square feet, like similar to that. I mean, we can wordsmith it after just getting the intent here.
Sure, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's the, the general.
Okay, that makes sense to me because I didn't think about the, you know, smaller buildings. Owen.
Yeah, and that dovetails nicely too with the ongoing discussion about existing buildings and their ability. To expand cultivation space. So and as we, I thought, had discussed with that. That we were considering limiting it to up to twenty five thousand square feet. So if you already have. Ten thousand square feet of cultivation, your existing building, you could theoretically add another building on of fifteen thousand square feet. Again, I. I think that that makes sense in terms of the spirit of what we've been discussing here.
Sure, and I, and I think I'll bring Planner Bag in on this.
Thanks. I think I understand the nature of the discussion and I think I totally appreciate it. I think though. There's two things I just wanted to mention. One is new information that I wanted to provide, which is that I did get a chance to talk to the city attorney today by phone. I have a couple pieces of information which generally speaking are all. Good for the amendment as we've framed it. So there's no, there's no issues with the amendment as we kind of have framed it out. The thing that he did. Day and, you know, I, I technically I was off today, but I took the phone call with him because it's hard to get a phone call with the city attorney. I have some notes and, you know, my goal is to. Take the input that might gather tonight and we can work, you know, I had started a draft to kind of rework all the language that came out of the hearing. And his, you know, request was that he sees it one more time before the council meeting, which I think is on December second. I think is that the hearing day that we continue to? So he said he would have no problem reviewing it. Excuse me, before December second. So, so he's seen the, he's seen the basic framework. That said, what he. Talked, talked about was. A decommissioning bond. Which is something that came up during the joint public hearings and initially there was a, the, the initial reaction was. We only really have done that for solar, but the city attorney seemed to suggest that he has, he couldn't pull up any while we're on the phone. He did, he did say that he's heard other communities have done that for larger, larger buildings. And he did say that there are a couple of communities have done it with larger, single retailers as well. Because of the problem that we've been discussing kind of all along, which is kind of, it might be difficult to reuse these and what do we do? They are left vacant. So part of that for me. Before we jump to, so I understand that it came, it may have come, I guess, as a surprise that there could be multiple buildings. The, the way that I had approached it initially was when we started talking about it was the cap was at fifty. Thousand square feet, you know, and that was, that's what we have in the ordinance today. Like, that was the whole issue is. Without any of these criteria, we, we, if we just said, yes, you can do cultivation in a new building, we could have a building that could get. Really big and that's, that was what happened in twenty, in two thousand eighteen, that was the discussion that kind of said, okay, let's, let's hold on to this for a little bit. When we, we brought up the discussion, we started at fifty. And I think through the research and looking at some of the maps and some of the examples that, that was big for a single building. And so I think we went down to twenty five. I'm slightly hesitant to just jump and automatically say that there's, there would never be another chance for. Two buildings, for example. That would amount to the fifty, because the fifty was where we started with the benchmark. That's what's in our ordinance today as a single retailer. So in my ration, in my thinking about it, when, when we went down to twenty five thousand square feet for a single building, it made sense because. There could be an opportunity to add a second building. So. You know, I'm looking at the, and I can pull it up, but it'll be fumbling. This is in the packet. This is. I'll just drop for a sec.
Yeah.
This is the. You know, we're in that, we're in that stage again, where, where, we're not talking about a single property, but we do have some information. The T C top folks, when they did their community outreach meeting showed a single building, but what I see it as is there's space for at least another one. So if, if. If you want to propose to put a single building cap on there, I just think it could still come up in discussion. It, it may be something that we may need to talk a little bit more about that, but I, my really long winded connection to this is. I believe that if the city attorney believes that a decommissioning, so if, if we could require. Some level of a decommissioning bond, if one or more of the buildings become vacant, we'd have to set some criteria. That that might be another way, which, it might be a tool which we didn't think we had before. Because I think, I think what, you know, I think that one fifty thousand square foot building is gonna be a lot harder to reuse than. Two twenty five thousand square, you could put different tenants into each of the buildings and it is potentially more doable. So I don't know, I just.
Yeah, so I have, I mean, I have, I have a couple of thoughts on that and, because I thought, I, I thought about this a lot over the last. Week, I guess. And, and I was thinking, well. This is something that's kind of new for the, for us in, in East Hampton. So, you know, erring on the side of, of smaller footprint might make sense now. And just like any other zoning issue as, as dynamics change as things unfold and, and we, you know, see how. Projects play out or we see how things do or don't, don't come. You know, we can always reassess that at a later time was kind of my thought on that piece. Because I was like, oh, well, fifty thousand square foot is, and I actually even went through and started looking at, you know, some fifty thousand square foot. Buildings like this is a cannabis cultivation facility that's fifty four thousand square feet. And then I was like, well, and so this kind of goes to your, you're talking about decommissioning bond, which I'm, I'm fine with. You know, but I think if we're gonna do it, we do it for any building that's over a certain square footage. You know, because look, this is a fifty thousand square foot Home Goods TJ, TJ Maxx. And, you know, other than the, other than the facade, I, you know, I, I dare anybody to tell me the difference between these two buildings. You know, the, the insides are gonna be pretty much identical. They're open, big, you know, square footage. And so if we, if we require a decommissioning bond for this, but we don't for this. Then, you know, to me, that doesn't, that doesn't seem fair. But, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I, and if, I mean, I, this is the first that, you know, you're sharing with this, so I'm just, I'm just kind of processing it myself. So. I don't know, I, I guess I would just. Still encourage us to potentially think about it a little bit more before, I mean, you could, I, I understand the nature of this meeting, which is to. Come up with some language and bring it back to the full council, I think. You know, I, we started at fifty thousand square foot for the retail, you know, if. If we move forward with a, the idea of a decommissioning bond, then a lot of that. Concerns go away for me, which I had initially, which is one fifty thousand square foot building was, was pretty big. That was concerning without the ability to have a decommissioning bond in place to do something with it. So anyway, I, I guess I don't want to believe it anymore. I, I wonder though, you know, I. It might be worth a little more discussion of this, if you, when you bring it to council, you might expect. You know, people to have additional discussion on this.
Yeah, and but Danielle, before I open it up to the public, I'm just gonna let the other counselors speak on this topic real quick, but then I will. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, well, for me, I gotta say, the idea of a decommissioning bond. And I think that's an awesome idea. And I, so first of all, I, I feel like this is again, one, one of these things where. I, I don't like, I, I agree with Counselor Derby that if we do it here, we probably should get around to doing it. You know, everywhere, but just. I don't have a problem with doing it here first and then circling back to the rest of the district necessarily, but it really does for me solve. The majority of the sort of land use concerns that I've consistently had. If we, if we, if we just say that like. You know, there's something in place to hedge against the chance of, of this industry kind of collapsing and people walking away from these properties. Then that. That really, that to me, that, that alleviates a lot of my concerns. So, yeah, I guess I'm just saying like. I sort of, I do like that idea. I also think that I, I don't want to. When it comes to the, the conversation of fifty thousand versus twenty five thousand, multiple buildings and whatnot. I, 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 part of me is trying to be a good listener and remember. That it seemed like there was a widespread feeling on the planning board. Fifty thousand would be, like, we, we just don't have anything of that size and that that would be. Kind of just an enormous facility that, that there seemed to be a lot of feeling on the planning board that that might not be. A great fit. So that's just something that I'm just gonna keep in mind as we go forward on this.
Agreed. Counselor's there.
I, I agree with Counselor Peak. I think that we're, we're, just from. What we've heard from the planning board and I think what we heard from the council. Last time, I think we're starting to depart a little bit from the sentiment around this amendment. I, I, I think that. We're already talking in general about around cultivation. And a potential cap on, on just cultivation buildings to twenty five thousand, that that doesn't include. All of the potential square footage from retail when you start to look at, you know, potential complex of sorts with retail cultivation. If someone also wanted to do R and D, that's a pretty big. That's a pretty big footprint that, again, overall size or just layout in general might be hard to. To accommodate by another business. In, in the back of my mind, I have been thinking about decommissioning as well as I did in the solar industry, so I'm glad you, that the planner brought that up. Because that's, that is something that I think is a great idea, but. Right now, I'm not necessarily of the mind to keep pushing this bigger. I think that. This discussion in general is a little bit of a jump in regards to what currently exists in the highway business district and. To some degree, creating equity in what's allowed and what currently exists. So I, I'm, I'm just of the mind to kind of keep it where we are.
Okay, thanks. Danielle, did you, did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question. So the twenty five thousand square foot. Footprint. My understanding is that that means that that's just the dimensions of the building. So if you have a three story building, the actual gross square footage would be seventy five thousand. So that would mean that potentially you could have a seventy five thousand square foot cultivation center. I just want, I just want, you know, to get some clarification on that. And I do have some other questions, but. I'm willing to ask that later, if that's possible.
And I, and I think that, I think that your assumption is correct is that it, the planning board. When we were in our joint public hearing, it, there was some talk about potential limiting of the, the height. But that never made it into the final draft. And so what is currently allowed is three stories. In that zone. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, so that footprint would be potentially. You know, creating the ability to have seventy five thousand square foot. I mean, probably not all usable, but a, a larger than twenty five thousand square foot grow if they go up one or two stories. So.
Can I just add to that, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So I talked to some people who are in the business and they said that it is possible to do cultivation. Like, I guess it depends, like, that's the canopy level. So if, if you could get information on that and verify that, that would be. Helpful for me to know.
So how many, like, what the, the ceiling height would need to be? Is that what you're asking?
Well, that you could potentially have three stories of cultivation. So you could potentially have seventy five, if you have a twenty five thousand square foot. Footprint in three stories, you can potentially have seventy five thousand square foot, foot of cultivation in one building. But I, you know, I'm not a cultivator, so I, you know, I don't know if that's true or not, but I did ask some people and they said it is true.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just say, from what I've seen at Inso when we got to go visit, that that would probably be true. Up to a point, because I know that they need to have space to process and, you know, so they have, they have to dry it, they have to have space for their. You know, the equipment and their workers and stuff. So I don't think it would be, you know, if you had, if, let's just say you had a twenty five thousand square foot footprint. You'd probably get twenty, potentially twenty thousand square feet of cultivation space is, is like off the top of my head.
Can I, could I ask, sorry, I don't take up space here, but. So when I look at the E heart plan, there's a separate building for manufacturing, which to, to me, that is like the drying and the. In the, like, you know, the processing. So.
That very well could be. I, I don't, I don't know what, I haven't, I don't know the specifics of their plan. But I imagine that. For. Depending on how they have it structured, that is definitely a possibility.
But so what you guys are discussing right now is if, so if there is only one building allowed per parcel, they wouldn't be able to do that, right? So it would only be one seventy five thousand square foot building.
For cultivation. So if they were, if they were, if they were using another building as, you know, so Owen said. That they could be using it for R and D, like, one of the things that apparently is in high demand and is a bit of a shortage in Massachusetts is testing facilities. You know, so if they wanted to have a, a testing facility and a, and combine that with a drying facility, then that could be a different building.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so Lindsay, I just saw your hand.
Oh, yeah, I just have a question.
Sure.
Um, in terms of the, the number of buildings. Allowed in the square footage, would that matter in terms of how many acres overall the property owner had?
As far as zoning goes, the, you know, the property size does dictate the amount of, you know, buildable space that there is, as, as, as well as frontage. You know, so those are the, those are the two things that are gonna kind of determine.
I'm just thinking if somebody owned a lot more land and they wanted to put two twenty five thousand square foot buildings on it.
Yeah, we're gonna be.
If that makes sense, that would be restricted if two people living next to, I mean, if two property owners right next door had the same. Set of parcels and could build a twenty five thousand square foot there and it's twenty five thousand square foot there.
Jeff, Jeff, you were gonna say.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to interrupt. I mean. Doing, I did some back of the napkin sketches for the Cernac property, which is just under three acres and the, the, the. Coverage, so that's, that's the way, like, that's what you're talking about, Counselor Derby is. The block coverage on three acres is forty five thousand square feet. So, you know, if you, that's a three acre parcel. If you take a. Thirty two acre parcel or even a fourteen acre parcel, this would be significantly less. You know, you'd be capping it far lower than, so, so again, we're gonna just fall into that area where if. If it's not cannabis related, they could still come in for retail, you know, a single retailer at fifty thousand square feet. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be capping it kind of. Half, half, in terms of footprint, if that's what we're still talking about. But, so I think Lindsay's right. I mean, it's not, it's not, not currently set up as a ratio to. Compare it to lot size.
Right. Counselor's there.
Oh, I was just saying that Counselor Rothschild brings up a good point that we're talking about kind of these static. These static limitations, you know, three acres, five acres and. Should we look at it more dynamically that, you know, in regarding how big the lot is? How much you can potentially expand or, or build? You know, especially if there is now this discussion about multiple buildings, like, can you have? You know, under X amount, can you only have, you know, one cultivation up to X amount of size? And then if. You then meet the next criteria in terms of land, amount of land you have, can you add additional buildings? It's just. I know this is over complicating an already complicated discussion, but it's just, you know, as the planner pointed out. You know, a twenty five thousand square foot building on a three acre parcel is much different than, you know, twenty five thousand acre built, a square foot building on a ten acre parcel. So. And maybe this is a discussion for another time, because I think we're, we're trying to. Figure out the basics of this. And as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot more that's been brought up that could certainly be. You know, figured out in the future. We're trying to just kind of create a basic amendment. Here to discuss addition of cultivation in the highway business district. And there's some other things that might just be future discussions, but. I do, again, I do think that the counselor brings up a good point, so that's something to think about, maybe not now.
And I agree. I think, I mean, it is a really good point and I, and I think that the progressive. Use of property makes sense, like, you know, if you have more property, you should be able to, you know, expand that. You know, I think one thing to consider. Is that, you know, if someone bought a large parcel and they decided to put, you know, a cannabis facility there. Under this proposal, they would potentially still have quite a bit of land to do other things. It would just restrict them from doing more of this. And, and, you know, as we kind of move into this, you know, I. You know, part of me is like, oh, we should. Allow multiple buildings and, and, you know, if they have more land, but I also like low and slow. And if we need, if we're punting now, we can pick it up later. And, and, and is it gonna do any damage? Probably not. But, but I'm happy to, to hear some, you know, other thoughts on that.
I'm of the same mind as you. I think that we keep adding a lot of things in that could potentially be future discussions and maybe try to build. Consensus around some general, some, some, just some very general points here about how to. Potentially create an amendment here that would, that would allow this to happen. In a reasonable way for the entire business district. So that's.
Okay, so, and, so I think that, you know, the way that I would like to, to, it's just get some agreement about the, the single. This one thing that we're talking about. And I know, Jeff, I appreciate that you want us to continue to think about this, but, you know, I'm thinking that. we're just gonna, we'll settle this for now. And if we need to bring it up at a, at a further meeting, um, you know, if you get us some more information that, you know, shows us that this doesn't make sense or whatnot, then we can go from there. But I'd like to just look at a couple of the other ones so we can, you know, get a little bit of, uh, closure here so we can move on to some of our new agenda items.
No, that makes sense.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Um, so one of the other things, um, Tom and Owen that came up last time that we hadn't really talked about was the three versus five acre parcel size. Um, and I know that, uh, I mean, really like, if there was a bunch of permits, then this might make more sense. But there's not any, there, there's one special permit that's outstanding, I guess, or maybe even that's spoken for. But, you know, if we put it down to three, it would take the pressure off of the largest parcels and it would give options to other parcels. I just wanted to throw that out there and see what you guys thought about that.
I'm fine with either. As long as the setbacks like that we have are being honored, then I don't see why it matters.
Okay.
Again, I'm very willing to have my opinion changed on these matters, but just like right now, I don't, I don't. As frankly, as long as the setbacks are there, I don't personally care about the actual like number of like acres because that could mean any number of things depending on the shape of the parcel.
Absolutely. And I think what it would mean is in the highway business, it would take it from like two or three parcels to maybe seven or eight. That would be available. So, you know, I, I just figured I'd throw it out there. Counselors there, do you have any thoughts on it?
No, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, again, at the end of the day, this amendment really is going to only apply to possibly two of our special permits, maybe one. It's a lot of work for that one. Yeah. I mean, it's what, what, whatever's, and honestly, I mean, since this is a discussion about the entire highway business district, then I would probably be in favor of potentially reducing that limit in, in order to create more equitable, make it more equitable across the district. As long as, I'd have to see some plans, kind of what some of these buildings would look like on a three acre parcel. Although, um, Planner Bag just pointed out, for instance, what the Cernac building, that that's a three acre parcel. So, yeah, I, I think that makes this more equitable. And so I, I'd be fine with that.
I just like the fact that it'll, it opens it to many more properties, which to me seems like it's in the more of i- in the spirit of like applying this to the whole zone. So, uh, Planner Bag, do you have any thoughts on this one?
Well, I, I concur. And, you know, it started off at three because the planned business development, um, section, which we're referring to because it has a lot of good criteria, started off with three. So when I was, it, it was during the meeting the other night, I mean, I was going through the maps and, um, there weren't that many that achieved five acres and the re, and all of them met three because those maps were produced when we were assessing how many properties would qualify for the three acres, which is what the plan, I, I think it's much more consistent this way.
Okay.
I will say, I, I have a quick question and I, I know you're trying to move forward and I appreciate that. The other night I did hear the suggestion that, um, after tonight and maybe the, the tweaking that happens after this, it goes to the planning board for sort of an advisory additional review. I, I could, I thought I heard that. The planning board is set to meet next Tuesday and I put it on the agenda, just in case they want to have a chance to review the potential changes. And I, but the reason why I'm saying that is because I know that that was the change that happened sort of towards the end of the planning board discussion and it went from three to five. But I think moving it back down to three, there's a series of reasons why the, the whole council would kind of consider that. So it makes sense to me.
Great. All right. So if you guys are okay with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change that to three. Uh, because I, I personally, I feel like it makes it more equitable. So, um, now, uh, the other thing was, um, the 150 foot, uh, buffer from residential zones. And, and so now 150 feet, like when I explained my reasoning for that number last time, it was because, you know, originally we had 100 feet from the road and I thought in a planned business development, you have to have all that green space. And so that would just be, that extra 50 feet would be an extra buffer and that green space could be within that buffer. Um, uh, so I just wanted to, to see if you guys had thought about that number at all, thought about the residential buffer, you know, I, I know that we, like, I feel like as we look at this, this might be again, something that we go back to and look at for everything besides just cannabis. You know, it's like, if, I mean, it is tough if you have a residential zone that butts directly to a highway business zone. But that happens in zoning sometimes. And but, you know, so if we can institute something that is going to kind of be, it might not mitigate all concerns, but it is some mitigation, at least a little bit of space between the, the residential and the, in the, the business zone. So I just wanted to throw that out and see if you guys have thought about that number at all. Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Well, I was just, um, I, I know that when we had talked about it, uh, I kind of asked, um, Jeff, whether, what his thoughts are, given sort of a more advanced knowledge of use of space than, than I think what I have. And I was just, I was just kind of curious, Jeff, if you had, had had any thoughts on this in the meantime.
You know, I'm sensitive, so it's tricky for sure. And I, I understand the entire conversation about the setback from residential, the residential zoning district. If you're, there's a couple of different ways to think about it, right? So if you wanted to talk on terms of a little bit more equitable, kind of like setbacks and what we're doing to cannabis buildings. We started initially with 100 feet from Route 10. Because there was a couple of reasons that I, that I recall, which is one, if, if, if it's just that, if it's a larger building, pushing it back is going to reduce its, uh, the apparent size. It's going to be stepped back and it won't, won't be like the first thing you see when you're driving down Route 10. I, I would, I would, I guess I would want to encourage us to look at whatever this, whatever the distance is from Route 10 is the same distance that we would apply to the residential setback. I think it's much more equitable than if you, you're trying to accommodate the abutter who, the abutting properties that, the residential butts highway business. So it's very important, but at the same time, you're looking at the entire community and separating the cannabis building from, from what the entire community sees. So it's a little bit more equitable. If we say a building shall be, whether it's 75 or 100 feet from Route 10, it, it makes it easier than, and that's the buffer that everyone's going to see, then it would give the same buffer to the residential property that might abut it as well. Um, just real quick on the 100 feet from Route 10. You know, the idea was because we're requiring retail, that 100 feet was based on, if you look at the pattern of development in Route 10 and there was, the maps show this, um, there's Abashon Hardware and then a couple of the white office buildings across the street. They all show this pattern where you can get a building and parking within the first 100 feet. So that's kind of, and, and shrinking it to 75 ha, also happened kind of at the tail end of that, one of the last meetings. I'm okay with that. Um, but 100 feet, you know, would be preferred, I think. Cause it, it really allows, uh, another building to go up front. And then I think the same kind of distribution of space between a residential, uh, boundary and a building, then you're kind of, you're being pretty equitable that way. That's, that's, you know, because we're not talking about odor mitigation. You know, we're just trying to push the building back, um, for issues like lighting and noise and, and activity. So that would be where I would maybe fall on it if I, if, if, if I'm being asked.
So basically it would be, it would look like 100 feet from Route 10, 100 feet residential setback, keep it consistent.
Yeah. I mean, I think that it's going to be easier to translate that out to the broader, you know, to broader, more broadly explain that.
Uh, what do you guys think about that? Tom and Owen? Yeah, go ahead, Owen.
I, I hear what the planner is saying. I, I think that again, down the road, um, which in this case is Route 10, we probably need to have a broader discussion about, um, equi, creating equitable, uh, zoning around the entire, all industries. Like, you know, we've had this ongoing discussion about kind of stigma and why is a, you know, a cannabis cultivation facility or cannabis retail facility really any different than a Burger King or, uh, you know, a, a doctor's office. And so, but, but the one general thing I've been thinking a lot about is kind of the fairness to residents about creating some space, you know, regardless of the industry with, uh, by creating kind of a buffer between residential lots and, and, you know, commercial lots. So I, I am in favor of that, um, in general. And obviously in this discussion, this is really where it's coming up. So this might be the seed that we plant to grow, you know, broader, a broader discussion around other, other industries in the highway business district for new construction, obviously. So, yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. And it makes sense what the planner said too about, you know, if it's 100 from the road, it should be 100 from, uh, uh, residents as well. So.
Well, and the, the biggest comparison too is just that, the, I'm just thumbing through the zoning and I, you know, the largest setback we have is 50 feet. And it's a 50 foot setback in an industrial district. And, you know, we've had discussions of uses in the industrial district too. So i- in the industrial district, there are areas that abut residential properties and the biggest setback we have is 50 feet. And, and if you're really talking about different types of uses, you know, those are more likely to end up on the extreme end. Um, or, but, but people have compared cannabis cultivation to an industrial use. And so even if this wasn't in, in, in the industrial district, you know, the biggest setback that we have is 50. So we're already kind of jumping double what would be required in the industrial district for an industrial. I mean, I know that it's different where I know we're talking about highway business, but there are industrial zone properties that abut residential and those, those folks get 50 feet. So maybe that's part of the broader later discussion, but for, just for some comparison, I guess.
Uh, that's great. And Counselor Peak?
Yeah, um, I think that for me, uh, this discussion of equity, I'm not sure. I, I'm processing this the same way because, um, while I am open to the notion that 75 feet or even 50 feet or whatever it is, is, um, an adequate setback to mitigate whatever externalities are coming from a property like this. I also think it's worth mentioning that like a residential neighbor is interacting with a large facility like this in a different way than a motorist driving by, you know? It's just, it's kind of a different thing. So when we're talking about sort of equity, like I, I personally could drive by any property and I, you know, the lighting or whatever, none of it, none of it's going, going to personally bother me that much because I'm going to be past it in 10 seconds. But, um, if you're living next to something, then certain visual elements or what have you might, um, like I, I'm at least open to consider the possibility of that being a, a bigger, um, concern. And so I guess my question is really, and, and maybe we don't have a perfect answer here, but I, I guess really the question for me is what, what amount of setback is going to be necessary? To sort of, uh, handle those sorts of sort of concerns about, you know, uh, noise and light and, and what have you.
Well, I think that that would be, um, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if there's a, a foot, like a, a number of feet that can adequately answer that. But I do know that within the planned business development, as part of that process, they have to have, um, you know, fairly specific plans about A, what their barrier is going to be between their property and adjacent properties. The lighting plan, uh, you know, a plan for basically all of those things get answered within the special permit process. You know, so it's kind of like, uh, we, you know, we, I think right now we're, what we need to do is say, all right, is it 150 feet that is going to provide that space or is it 100 feet and, and make it consistent, you know, 100 feet from the road, 100 feet from neighbors' properties? Because they, they do, within the planned business development, they do have to provide a, a decent amount of mitigation between the property, more so than anybody, more so than any other type of project. And so I, I don't know if there is an answer for that question though, Tom, but it's a good, it's a good question.
So just broadly, as long as the mitigation's there, I'm fine. I just want to make sure that we're not like, you know, for, for the people that are, you know, pressed right up to the, you know, the line with this, uh, or, or who could potentially be, you know, right against the property line, uh, with this sort of facility. As long as the mitigation is there, that is, that's my, as long as the mitigation's there and this decommissioning bond is there, um, tho, those are my two, like, those are, those are my two biggest concerns.
Sounds good. All right. Thanks, Tom. Uh, Danielle, I see you have your hand up again.
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, you know, I really appreciate you just bringing, just putting this on the table because, um, I feel like this is really important as a resident who lives right next to, um, this zone. I do have to say, you know, 150 feet is not that much. Although it's more than 25 and 50, um, so I'll take it. Um, but it's really not that much. I think my outbuilding in my house is about 100 feet long. It's, it's just, you know, it's, it's not a crazy amount. Um, and we're talking about two parcels, right? We're not, we're talking about a three acre parcel, a potential three acre parcel and a potential, uh, five acre parcel. And I really think like 100 feet, 250 feet, whatever, can, compared to the size of these lots is really nothing. So I really, I really don't see a reason not to allow this. I mean, you can decide whatever you want to decide, but I just think, you know, compared to, to the size of these lots, they're, the, these lots are humongous. They have the space to push buildings back. They're capable of doing that. Um, and when you look at E Hart's proposal, it's very, very close to the community that resides next to, um, this land. Um, and that's one of our concerns was that there wasn't, it, we were concerned that there wasn't enough space between the building, um, and the property beside it. Um, and also it's not terribly crazy to ask this. I mean, other communities have 500 feet buffers, 350 foot buffers, and a lot of communities don't allow cultivation in highway business. They only allow it in an industrial zone. For some reason, East Hampton is the only town that I know of, um, that is considering this to be adjacent.
We tend to do things a little differently here.
Yeah, I'm starting to get that.
Which is, which, which by the way, is one of the things that makes East Hampton such a cool place to live.
Well, it depends on who you are and what side of the table you're on, because I'm on the side where it's not so cool right now. So.
And that's fair enough. Um, but I would say this, I would say this, that this isn't, you know, as, as we move forward. So I, I appreciate you, you know, commenting on that because I know that this is something that affects you. You know, but I just wanted like backtrack just a little bit, you know, as of, as it stands right now, any other like big facility that goes into highway business does not have a setback, um, requirement that's as robust as this. And then so, you know, I, I think that my vision is to, to circle back on this and try to look at the whole zone and, and, you know, maybe look at moving forward with a 100 foot buffer here. And then, uh, for cannabis, but then also looking at, well, we should apply this to every business because it's not just your property that, you know, that potentially has the, um, a, a, a big facility that could go right up against you. I mean, there's other places in the city that have that as well. And we want to make sure that everybody has a little bit of a layer of protection, you know, um, for their, for what they perceive as their quality of life. So I think that's important. Counselors there?
This is a planning board question. So Jeff, if, or sorry, Mr. Bag. If this, regardless of, of the actual, of an actual setback zone in the zoning, are there ever situations with a given project where for a variety of reasons, the setbacks, um, by developers are actually made bigger than what they actually are in the zone because of either discussion with residents or butters or, uh, other community concerns? Does that ever happen?
I'm sure it does, but you're going to be better off setting, setting something as the minimum. Just because I think the, the way it works is a developer will be looking at the zoning well in advance of talking to anybody. So, you know, understanding that the minimum, like they all look at the, what's the minimum expectation for a site to go into some kind of development and then they, they might have some other reasons. But it's usually too late in the process to really make a, a huge change. So, so the, the, there's the value of having a setback is in, in this discussion is important. It's just kind of like what, what is the distance that's fair to the property owner and the abutting property owner? So it's kind of like the fairness of that as well, but it's going to be better to have something.
Well, it's also safe to say that, you know, whatever plan was put forward, it, it's basically, you know, that was just kind of pie in the sky probably. I mean, if we create these restrictions, it's going to have to be a whole new layout. you know, that was just kind of pie in the sky probably. I mean, if we create these restrictions, it's going to have to be a whole new layout. Um, you know, and and a lot of times tho- those plans, you don't actually see the real plans until the special permit comes forward. Um, and so, you know, they could potentially push the whole, you know, who knows what they're going to do. But in a planned business development, they would not be able to do what they kind of, that that little drawing that I saw that you held up, right?
Well, if I, they might be able to do that one. I mean, that that was the document that they put out at the community outreach meeting. That's the, that's the public document that's out. That it shows a twenty-two thousand square foot cultivation building, five thousand square feet of manufacturing. So that would be, that's a couple thousand square feet over the the cap. So I don't know, maybe they could, they could probably make it smaller and then a five thousand square foot retail. So so that is doable. Um, I do think it's on the smaller side of what, because that plan leaves a big green space. I think Ms. Martin now mentioned. Now, I don't think it was going to be hemp. I think it was going to be another building. I'd have to guess based on the way that drawing looks.
Alrighty. Um, so how do, how do you, how do my committee members feel about um looking at the creating a hundred feet from Route ten and a hundred feet from residential property lines? Keep it simple, um, a hundred feet on both edges.
I don't have any objection to that.
Counselor's Eric.
Uh, that's fine, although I I do agree with Counselor Peak's sentiment that uh now that, now that he mentioned it, that that uh how a motorist interacts with a building is different than how a resident interacts with with a building. So you know, I I uh I can understand why one could be bigger than the other. I would, I would probably support the hundred fifty foot that we had brought up previously.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, if we change the seventy-five feet to a hundred feet from the road, would that be a problem?
I don't think so. No, I mean, I don't, no.
Okay, so let, how about, how about this? We go a hundred feet from the road and keep the hundred and fifty feet. It's pretty close and I think it gives a little bit of a margin for the, for the residential folks, you know? Um, so if you guys are okay with that, let's, let's go with that. Okay.
That's also fine with me.
Great. Could we vote on that? Um, or?
Uh, if you, if you want to do these um line by line, or if you want to take them as a group, um.
Oh, yeah, I'd be, well, yeah, I'd be interested if we could, if, I mean, why don't we see, why don't we vote on them as a group if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, then if there's, if there's separate, if there's lack of consensus and separate hours, maybe just vote that way.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, cool. Well, I just wanted to make sure that there was a, okay, thank you.
Um, and so the the um, the last thing, I believe is the last issue, I I believe, um, is that um, section ten point ten dot four dot five, which is the um two hundred foot buffer and that we kind of created between cannabis establishments. Uh, and so basically, you know, I I don't see its point in highway business. So, you know, what I put in here was basically just to amend section ten dot ten dot four dot five to exclude highway business from the two hundred foot buffer. Counselor Peak.
I'm fine with this. Um, if uh, I know that the other thing that we were talking about was to just exempt facilities that were within the confines of a planned business development from this sort of thing. So I, I mean, frankly, I I think that given the number of licenses we've handed out, it's, it's really kind of all the same, but the other way that we had, uh, the, the way that I think I had heard about it last time was just to say that like cannabis facilities located within a planned business development will be exempt from this. Um.
And that's how I wrote it.
Oh, okay. So that's what this is supposed to say or?
No, no. So I changed it because I felt like after thinking about it and after we had talked about it, I was like, oh, maybe that's too complicated. And you know, like maybe it just makes more sense to just to say it doesn't like just strike out highway business. Um, you know, just put a a red line to change it, um, as opposed to like adding a whole new segment. Um, you know, because Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could fix this with just a red line through the, the highway business, having it applied to highway business, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, when I spoke with the attorney, you know, he understood that we were working within this section. Um, and I think he had, he had a comfort level of adding that provision into this section.
Okay.
But I did not talk to him about taking a different section. Um, so for, and I, I the notes I have would be that um it would be just adding it into one of these bullets. So I think the way the draft, the, the notes that I have from today were up at the top B. So we have, oh, actually, it's the same B as you have here, the B cultivation manufacturing must be in a property of at least three acres of land. And I did talk to him and he said it's not of any importance to, to the legality of it if we go from three to five.
Okay.
But then he just proposed putting a semicolon right there um in B and just say um a- as if saying and shall not be subject to the two hundred foot buffer of section ten point ten for whatever that other section was. So it's, it's all, it's all one in the same, except it's just going to be easier if we're just putting it right in this section.
Okay, so can you say that again?
Yep, shall not, shall not be subject to the two hundred foot buffer of section. And then I just don't know the section number off the top of my head, whatever you had said before, but um.
And point ten point four point five?
Yes.
Think that's right. So is that correct?
That's the idea, yep.
Okay. Um, alright, so I mean, I guess that if that's what the, the our city solicitor, that was a good idea. Um, I I think, you know, because I, that piece to me, I think makes a lot of sense, uh, you know, so.
Yeah, and one of the rationales that he picked up on, you know, he's seen that ordinance before, but what he picked up on was if we're adding retail and and we want the retail to be closer to the road, then it is also prompting the removal of that setback because you want the building, you want the retail buildings to be closer to the road.
Right.
So if it happens to be across the street from another one, it's still across a whole street and it's not what we talked about on Cottage Street where you're just then a pedestrian walking and all, you know, six storefronts in a row are the same. That's, that's, that would be different.
Right, okay. Uh, Owen, did you have any thoughts on this one or are we good?
I don't, I don't have, I I don't know how I think about this. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so I I'm still formulating uh thoughts about that. I don't, I'm not sure. So.
Do, do we want to throw some discussion out there on the pros and cons?
No, I just haven't, I just haven't been able to formulate where I, where I fall on this. So. Yeah.
That's fair enough. Okay, uh, it looks like Danielle raised her hand again. Danielle?
Yeah, um, sorry, I just have a lot of questions. Um, so if this isn't about one entity, right, one proposal, we're talking about the E-Harp proposal, this is about the whole highway business district. I mean, you're doing this for the greater good of East Hampton. Why have this? Because you haven't even, you didn't propose this until Episcopal um submitted their special permit application. And then all of a sudden, you considered this to be part of the amendment. Um, and I know Cott brought it up in discussion um because of his concerns about what this would do for business for him. Um, so I'm just wondering, like, if this isn't about E-Harp, why have it, why lift this buffer? Because this buffer actually does make sense for somebody that lives on this road and that has to walk on this road and look at two cultivation and reti- cannabis retail centers right across the street from each other. It's going to have that effect on us. And even, so basically, you're going to be driving in from North Hampton and you're going to see cannabis and you're going to drive a little bit more. And then you might see a Dunkin' Donuts and then you're going to drive a little bit more and then you're going to see cannabis, cannabis, cannabis. So that's what you're going to get when you're driving from North Hampton into East Hampton. So you're actually going to have the same effects that you would if you're walking downtown and you're seeing cannabis, cannabis, except you're driving in a car and you're seeing cannabis, cannabis, cannabis. We have, I think, four cannabis co- uh proposals on this road. And then that's not including, or I think that is including the one that's on Cook Street. Um, I'm not sure if that's what you want for East Hampton, but as a resident and as somebody who lives here, I just think it's, it doesn't make much sense why you would not allow, why you would allow, not allow this for downtown, but you would allow this for highway business. I see that as discrimination against those who live here on the highway business zone.
Good, thanks. Um, you know, as far as a a response to that, I mean, you know, highway business is the, the d- the part of the city that's designated for businesses um that are, you know, are larger, you know, and you can have a Burger King and a McDonald's next to each other. There's no, you know, I mean, it's uh you know, what we had talked about in the original discussions in a couple of years ago was not wanting to have all of our storefronts and in our central downtown district to to be um cannabis, just like we don't. And and, you know, at that point, we, this was still pretty new. Uh, I I don't think that we would want, you know, uh, bars, you know, but but the reality is, is, you know, there is bars all next to each other, and I don't think that that defines the city necessarily. Um, so, you know, I I hear what you're saying. I I just, I don't know if I agree. So. Um, okay, so Owen, you said you're not sure about this one. How do we, because if we want to vote on these as a, and we don't, we don't, honestly, I mean, our, we, this is continued to the second. So we actually don't have to make any votes. If you want, if you feel more comfortable sitting with us and thinking about it um and, you know, just having a meeting in between, but obviously, we're going to be able to meet before the second. Um, so, I mean, if, if that's your comfort level, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to entertain that. Counselor Peak.
I'd just as soon not vote tonight anyway, because for, before I'm totally ready to sign off on this, I'm going to need to see that decommissioning bond language.
Okay. I I believe we do have decommissioning bond language for solar facilities.
Yeah, I'm sure that we have something that can be easily applied. I just, uh, in the course of this discussion, I haven't reviewed it. I know I've seen it in the past uh as part of the property committee, but that was a a year or two ago. So.
Okay. Planner Bag.
If, if you're, if you're open to that idea of giving this, the ordinance subcommittee one more meeting, I think it'd be good because I agree with Counselor Peak that um, the city attorney mentioned the language. I haven't seen it yet either. Um, the other thing, and before we get off the call, you know, I'm gathering all this. So I think all this is in, is pretty much in line with what we ma- uh discussed at the other, that the actual hearing. Um, except, you know, except for the twenty-five thousand square foot cap. But um, the other language that we should broach real quick is the existing building expansion. So um, I can't remember off the top of my head if if we had some of that presented at council, but I have some of it now. Um, it would be, um, you know, any cultivation manufacturing operation in an existing building may not exceed twenty-five thousand square feet and must be situated seventy-five feet from Route ten and a hundred fifty feet from any property in a residential zoning district. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, actually. Um, what the attorney recommended we do is, um, and this is what I would hope to be able to do is take the conversations that we're having now and and polish it up and put it back into a document and then have this group look at it. Obviously, again, before it goes back to full council, um, he recommended um adding, it's in the first paragraph at the top. So, you know, uh, any cannabis establishment shall be permitted provided the cannabis establishment is located in an existing building. It's located in a building in existence as of an included date. Um, and then, or if one is to be located in a building constructed or expanded after another date. So he's just thinking about it in terms of establishing some dates and it would, it would most likely be projected into, it would, it'd be projected like we would guess which date um council would vote on this. So sometime in December probably or January, and that would probably be like the date that would get inserted. So or we have to, let me think about that in terms of the existing building. But the idea was adding some language for for some dates for the existing and proposed.
Great. That makes a lot of sense. And is it possible for you to um send that along?
Yeah, what happened was we were having a phone conversation and so he doesn't have, it does not have the decommissioning language in yet. So I'd like to try to get that in and then, and then, of course, send it off. So.
So, so how about this? Can I send what I have to you and then you, and then we send it to him and then we can um then we'll, we'll schedule another meeting and so maybe we can even have some feedback from him.
Yep. And if it's not semantics, you know, I took what, I took what you had provided and discussed at council and I inserted it into the art, the same format, and that's what he saw. Um, so the thing that I really want to um make sure we can get some language on is the decommissioning idea. And then I think it's ready to send back out.
Great.
Okay.
Sounds good. Um, okay, so I I think that actually leaves us at a pretty good spot with this. Um, and so what we'll do is we'll, uh, you know, we'll schedule another meeting between now and and December second, which is the continuation of the public hearing. Uh, where hopefully we can get some feedback from the city solicitor on, on the decommissioning language and um the existing building language. And he can take a look at what I'll send to you tonight, Jeff. Um.
Yeah, and and if I didn't say it before, I mean, I think he had really no issues. So I I think he will not opine on like whether it should be seventy-five or a hundred or a hundred and fifty, because I think he understands the why. Like there's a setback. So um, it it's useful that I got him on the phone today. He's seen it. He's fine with the framework. So I think we're all comfortable knowing that from here on out, if we're adding things that are reasonably related, it should not be an issue. But he, he said that he'll look at it um, one final time before full city council and be able to acknowledge pub, like I don't know, and write like an email or something that he looked at it, because I think that was, that came out of the last meeting. So he's fine with that.
All right. Thanks so much. Appreciate that. Um, uh, does anybody else want to address this issue? But but because we're going to start moving on to some other um uh agenda items. So if you, uh, I'm happy to give anybody would like to say one last thing before we wrap this up. Okay, I don't, I don't see anything. Uh, Counselor's Eric.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like to set a meeting now? Because I know that, I don't know if the, some of the this seems to be a, a topic of high interest. I don't know if if folks who have been interested in this are planning to jump off the meeting now or stay on, but just in the interest of of not making them wait, I don't know if you'd be interested in doing that.
I would, I would. Yeah, you guys have your calendars ready? Thanks, thanks for that, Owen. Um, so, uh, you know, I'm thinking maybe the twenty-fourth. Are you guys around on the twenty-fourth? Owen, can you do Tuesday the twenty-fourth? Oh, Jeff, what?
Um, on Tu- on Tuesdays, like the planning board is meeting every single Tuesday. Um, till December fifteenth. I've got, I've got them, they're pretty busy.
Okay. Okay. Well, I do want to have, that does, that is important information because I do want you to be able to be here. Um, so can we look at the next day, which is Wednesday, the twenty-fifth? I know we're sneak up on Thanksgiving, but that's going to be virtual for most of us. The COVID numbers as we're seeing. So um, uh, Tom, Owen, you think the twenty-fifth would work for you guys?
It's fine with me.
Okay.
Um, yeah, what time are you thinking?
Probably same time, six.
Um, I think that will.
I can adjust that if you need it.
Yeah, I'll um, um, li- I, that, that should work.
If you need a little extra time to get home and situate yourself, I'm, I'm happy to go to six thirty.
That might be work better. I'm just thinking about pre-Thanksgiving.
Right.
Um, if that's, if that, if that's okay.
Yeah, so you, you, you let me know what is, works best for you.
Is, is, is six thirty okay for, just to get myself some padding?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, let me just write it in and I'm going to put it at six thirty. Okay, so uh, everybody that's on the call, uh, the next ordinance subcommittee meeting will be uh Wednesday, the twenty-fifth of November at six thirty. Um, and I'm going to send that off to Peg as soon as this meeting's over, so it'll get posted as soon as possible. Great. Okay. Awesome. So let's take a look. We have some other stuff, yay, that we can talk about. Um. So I'm going to skip over uh the engine brake, even though I did, I would, I want to, I, I guess I'm not going to skip over engine brake. I, I, I have um received um a couple of pieces of feedback from the Mill Industrial District around this being an issue. Um, and so uh, one was from one of the owners of the buildings, um, and another was a fellow counselor uh called and let me know that some constituent. Fellow counselor called and let me know that some constituents were letting him know that this was becoming an issue. Now. Where we left off was. With Officer Ross, who I noticed has been out doing enforcement, you know, kind of. Saying that it might not be the engine brake that's making all of this noise. So, you know, if we ban engine brakes and not is not necessarily going to be affixed to this problem. So I I think that what I'll do is, I haven't asked him back to the meeting because I knew that this highway business thing was going to be occupying our time. But as we kind of move this off, I'm going to get him back in and just reconfirm if there's anything we can do to like help. The the people that are living in that area and the other areas that are being affected by this that can help with the the noise. Counselor's there.
Yeah, I haven't, you know, I I live in the neighborhood that kind of initiated this discussion. I haven't heard too much recently. I did get. A communication from a constituent, maybe a month or two ago, but it was from just a a phone number to emails. And I and I so I don't know who it was from, so I apologize to whoever that was. I did. I did reach back out to ask who it was and they didn't respond. The intention of 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 doing this is good. I don't know how we'll enforce it. And as Sergeant Ross indicated, again, what we're perceiving, like, just to echo what you said, Mr. Chairman. What what we're perceiving as engine brakes may just may not be. It might be exhaust issues. I don't know how to figure this out. I wonder if there's some way to at least. Create some sort of mitigation to encourage trucks to 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 drive slower or something, but I don't I don't. It's it's I think it's just more a product of what's going on in the city that there's a lot of trucks right now for a variety of reasons. I don't I don't know what to do about it, so that's where I'm at.
So we'll we'll revisit it. I think it's something that is worth keeping on so we can, you know, see if there are any mitigation things that we can do. Counselor Peak, do you have anything you want to add or can I?
No, I'd be interested in talking to him, but I I generally go along the same line that I'm not confident at this point that what. We'd be what people are asking us to enforce is what the actual problem is and I'm not certainly comfortable. Potentially asking, you know, truck drivers to drive in a way that makes them feel less safe if that's not actually. What is causing the noise that's bothering people? So I'm not, you know, I I know that. Last time we talked to Officer Ross, he basically, he he had talked about. Sort of going to some of the serial offender like commercial businesses who maybe have been modifying their trucks or or, you know. Not having their mufflers properly installed and and sort of just letting them know that they could get into some trouble if they don't. Clean their act up. And I I don't know how well that's actually. You know, but I I certainly, if if the if the truth is that a compliant. Truck can use their engine brake without making the sort of noise that people are concerned about, then I I just continue to be really resistant to the idea. Of penalizing those people because other people. Irresponsibly modified their trucks, which to the sound of what I've heard about, seems to actually be the source of the problem. But again, if it turns out I'm wrong about any of that, I'm happy to quickly reevaluate that position.
Well, hopefully, we'll we'll get some more information and we'll keep that on. So we do have. The next thing is to remove Columbus Day and replace with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so I think that, you know, for me, this is a really important issue. I think it's about time if if. And and so what I think we need to focus on, and I know Counselor's there, you did a lot of research on this, is like. What does an ordinance look like? How do we how do we create this to make it so, you know, we change? How we celebrate a holiday in the city. So do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. I I do have some time, good trace, Mr. Chairman, so I apologize.
That's right. I think you did tell you you say that you had to, which is fine. Let's just get this one out.
Yeah, I mean, so so my my brief comment is the reason I introduced this as an ordinance as opposed to a a resolution is because of. Exactly the nature of the two. If if we just and some of the feedback I've received from some residents is that. You know, if this is just something that we read off and we sign and we feel good about ourselves. Because we on paper changed the name of something, I don't really know if that's accomplishing the intention and that's why I want to. Submit it as an ordinance because it does actually make it binding and it makes it, you know, an actual law within the city. It's interesting, look researching this, looking at some other cities, they actually have like code. Within their ordinances actually defines some of their city holidays, which we don't have. Which was, I think of my introductory letter, I might have written something about that 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 it might be. Interesting to and I kind of tried to look at other places. I did talk to our director of. Of Human Resources about this. So. It it's just something to 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 consider also in terms of kind of really codifying this and and other holidays that we celebrate in the city. But to step back again, you know, I think that making this an actual ordinance actually makes it binding. It tells. You know, we have directions in here about. School curriculum. How that this should be taught. Again, a non-binding resolution, you know, would really leave that more up in the air. There's some discussions about businesses. Again, if you look at the language, that's more suggestions. Obviously, there's it does direct us to communicate this to a variety of of indigenous. Peoples and tribes. I I don't have the language in front of me, but, you know, this is very important. I I think and I think that the way if by doing it this way, it goes above and beyond what's been done elsewhere. And in reviewing the language with, you know, a variety of indigenous people and groups, I think they they appreciate that we're approaching it this way.
I think I think that's great and I, you know, I think. You know, our task will be to try to figure out how we where we can fit this in the ordinances, so so it, you know, seamless, but that's that's going to be easy. So I look forward to to digging into this, because I I know you have to be done by seven thirty, right?
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I don't looking at the, I can't remember if I I know I put this in somewhere that there is. Kind of space early in the early in our general ordinances and I can be more prepared at a future meeting. Because I didn't think we'd talk about this tonight, but there is space early in our ordinance. It's basically general operations of the city and I think that makes the most sense. As well as potentially kind of creating a section for holidays. And so if you if you'd like. Maybe not the next meeting, the meeting after, just in the interest of giving it the appropriate space. I could I could come back to you with with kind of some better prepared recommendations if that's okay with you.
That's perfect. I just wanted to, you know, get this out first, our first quick discussion on it, because I felt like I I we've been sitting on it and I didn't want to sit on it.
No, I appreciate that. And I I knew we had other things in front of us and and I wanted to, again, I wanted to make sure this got the discussion it deserved and. And I do appreciate your collaboration on this and your your letter. Mr. Derby was, you know, was really touching and I think you probably saw that there was a that this ended up on social media. And I think people were really touched by what you had to say and, you know, at least from from the feedback in that format, it seemed to be that. The people of East Hampton do. Do seem to be wanting this to happen, so.
It seemed like it did have quite a bit of support and and I think that's great. And I thank you for the the kind words. Counselor Peak, do you have any thoughts on this before we and there'll probably be the final thoughts because it seems, you know, I know the counselor's there, it has to get going, but.
Other than that, I support it. I don't have any particular thoughts at this time.
That's good to hear. And and I would love to, you know, I think maybe what we can do is we can look at. You know, we have our next meeting that Wednesday. Maybe we can look at meeting after the Thanksgiving so we can. Dig into the Indigenous Peoples' Day and the the solar ordinance. I feel like those two are ones that I really want to try to. Start working on before the new year. If that's all right with you guys. Great, awesome. Well, hey, I appreciate your time tonight, everybody that came. I appreciate your comments. And I appreciate you coming and participating. So our next meeting is going to be, make sure I get it right. I believe it's Wednesday, the twenty fifth, but I have to open up my calendar, Wednesday, the twenty fifth at six thirty. So I'm going to I'm going to send that out right now and and I want to thank everybody again for coming. So everybody have a great night.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Beautiful. All right, Counselor Zaret.
Yes.
Counselor Peak?
Yes.
And I vote affirmative as well. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.